I'm going to call the regular meeting to order. It's, what day is today? Thursday, uh, October the 5th.
Yeah.
Alright, so first thing is to set a just agenda.
We need to add an item number four.
Item four.
Which is Select Board to authorize the Town Manager to sign the SEB proposal to complete Phase Two of the Pedestrian Bridge and Park Project. I think we already did that, but it must be revised, is that it?
I don't know. Do we want to add an executive session? Personnel to...
I, I responded, yes.
Yeah? Yeah, yeah, yeah? Who's the one? I thought you were going to be late.
Is it possible that Daniel will turn up or he...
No, I don't think so. But he's, he said he's good.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Did you add an item?
We had an item four.
Phase two bridge.
Yep.
Is it because it was revised?
Yeah.
We're also gonna add, after old business, we're gonna add a executive session. Which is personnel related.
To include?
To include the Town Manager.
Okay.
Okay.
Key board doesn't work.
Alright. Anything else? Can somebody make a motion to approve that?
So, try it.
Alright. All in favor of approving the adjusted agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next communication from the audience, we have someone on Zoom. Hi Monica, would you like to say anything?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, how are you all doing?
Good.
Okay, I wasn't able to hear what you had just said, I heard Monica and that was all I heard.
Oh, good thing I said your name. So, we're, this is our communication from the audience section of our meeting. And we don't have you as a, like an item on our agenda, so I'm assuming you wanted to communicate something with us.
Okay, so you ready for that now, you're saying?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, good after, good evening, my name's Monica Miles, I'm a public affairs specialist with the US Small Business Administration. And the SBA wants to make sure that everyone in your county is aware that homeowners, renters, businesses, and nonprofits that were affected by the storms and floods that occurred back on July 7th through the 21st of this year can apply to a, to the US Small Business Administration for a low interest rate loan if they were affected by the disaster. If any type of funds from insurance proceeds, or from FEMA, or a similar type program is not sufficient in order for the person or the business or nonprofit to recover from the disaster, they can apply to the US Small Business Administration for a loan. Although it's called the Small Business Administration, when it comes to disasters, the agency can give loans to homeowners, renters, businesses of all sizes, and nonprofit organizations. The loans do not accrue an interest for the first year of the loan, and the first payment on the loan is not due for a year later, one year after the first proceeds are received by the borrower. In addition, the loans do have low interest rates for a homeowner or somebody who's renting their home. The interest rate is 2.5%. For a nonprofit, it's 2.375%, and for a business, it's 4%. Those are the lowest rates they, that each one of those loans can be. And with respect to our homeowner, somebody who owns their home, if the home structure and the grounds were damaged by the storm, they can get a loan up to $200,000. Then with respect to the personal property, the person who owns their home or renting their home in the county can get a loan for their personal property up to $40,000, and that can include a vehicle as well. With respect to a business and a nonprofit, the maximum loan amount is $2 million for all types of loan proceeds that the applicant could apply for. People and businesses and nonprofits do not have to wait to hear from their insurance company before they can apply for a loan. They can do so now. And then with respect to the property, a loan for property damage, again for the building, or for the contents, or a vehicle, or something of that nature, the deadline for that is next week on October 12th. So, we're really trying to get this information back out to the public. Most loans, which we have a term of up to 30 years for repaying it. And again, if somebody takes out a loan, again, no interest accruing for the first year. If they want to pay that loan off earlier, such as at, right at the end of the first year before the first payment is due, they could do so and have these other funds without any, incurring any interest whatsoever. The SBA does ask for collateral. If the loan exceeds $25,000, however, if the applicant doesn't have collateral, then they can still apply for the loan, that will not terminate the situation. There's no application fee to apply for the loan, and if the applicant later determines that they don't need the loan, or they don't have to go forward with it, there's no requirement to do so. Once the applicant submits all the paperwork that the agency has requested, the SBA tries to give them an answer as to whether or not the loan was approved within a period of two to three weeks. And once, and if they decide to go forward with the loan, once they've signed the loan closing documents and had an opportunity to review them, of course, the agency tries to get them the first draw on their loan amount within about five business days. With respect to businesses and nonprofits, they can also apply for what's called an economic injury disaster loan. That's a loan where the business or the nonprofit had a decrease in its sales, its expected revenue, and they attributed directly to the disaster. And as a result of that decrease in their revenue, they're not able to pay their ordinary necessary bills. So, they can apply for the economic injury disaster loan, which is also called a working capital loan. And that's designed to ensure that the business or nonprofit is able to keep up with its financial obligations during the disaster period. Now, that particular loan, again, is different, so the deadline for that is not until next year, which is April 15th, 2024. Because sometimes it takes businesses and nonprofit organizations a period of a few months in order for them to actually notice that there has been a decline in their revenue and to attribute it to the disaster. Anybody wanting to apply for a loan can go to the SBA's website, sba.gov/disaster. Or they can call the SBA for additional information at 1-800-659-2955. Or for the hearing impaired, call 711. Or they can go to disasterloanassistance.sba.gov, and they'll find an application to apply for the loan there as well. And as well, there are still some temporary recovery centers in the state of Vermont. There's none in your county at this time, but if anybody wants to call the SBA and get the most recent update on that information, they can do so again at 1-800-659-2955. And that's pretty much it regarding the loan.
Great. Thank you, thank you for the update and for reminding people the deadline for individuals is October 12th, you said.
Yes, yes, October 12th.
Alright. Great. Any, any questions for Monica, will we have her?
Thank you for reaching out, Monica.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for allowing me to participate today.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay.
Alright, alright, you all take care.
You too.
Okay. Alright, so next up is Select Board to approve minutes from regular Select Board meeting September 21st.
I can motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 21st as written. Is that good?
Any discussion, changes? It looks good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries, minutes approved. Uh, next up is Library Trustee Report, we have Jody Lou Smith here. Jody, we turn the floor over to you, I think, actually. Yeah?
Um, I was asked to come give an update.
You were, everybody was curious about what's happening across the road.
Yeah, we have a restart date of October 16th. We have confirmation from the subs, at least the four subs who need to be there for the opening work. And we expect that we'll start seeing equipment moving this next week because there'll be cleanup on the site and preparation to get ready. We are still talking to the builders on final kind of numbers, but, and we're also talking to funders. So, it's all falling into place, but our new target completion date is August of next June. That is the update, what else did you want to ask about?
How, so the general gist of the change is to, that the new addition isn't going to have to go as low into the ground, and that's going to allow the building to stay afloat?
Yeah, so, I think I told you last time I was here that we decided to raise the building because, and got a variance to use a lula instead of an elevator. But in order to not have a giant ramp on the front, we essentially redesigned the building. And that's partly why we've had a much longer delay than I thought last time I was here, is that it turned out we had to... Doing the redesign of the floor levels meant we had to reestimate most aspects of the wood of one level that got foot shorter, needed to get reestimated. And then it needed to go through structural review and get a new structural design, and it needed a new civil design. And so, all those design pieces have taken a while, those came in about three weeks ago, the last of them. And then the builders have been sending out new specs to their subs to get new estimates.
Do you don't have all the estimates back yet?
They're not totally compiled yet, but they're close.
Do you have an idea of the increase in their cost?
Well, there's a whole bunch of allowances in there for unknowns, and so, but it's looking like it will be somewhere between 200 and 400 additional. We do have contingency money built in, and we're, as I said, talking to funders. One of our funders is willing to consider an additional grant to you.
Oh, great.
Yeah. So, and then we have your options we will pursue, but it's... That as, you know, actual, you know, when they budget, when they estimate, they give you the biggest possible number, and then as actual funds are spent, those get reallocated, whatever isn't used gets reallocated toward the front end, so... You know, we already knew that we were going to have a little bit more finishing to do, and so, but we have now better part of a year to raise that additional money for finishing. We should be fine.
Good, so moving forward on the 16th, you said?
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, we're, we'd love to get some nice weather into November because it would save us money on grant duty, for sure. Yeah. So, the sooner we can...
We'll get it. I was telling Tom today, we're not going to have winter until the end of December.
Sounds good.
Oh, boy.
Well, it does sound good for us.
Famous last words.
Famous last words. We need to go from 80 to minus 80.
Well, well, thank you for the update.
Yeah, sure.
Jody, it occurs to me that when you're done with this, you have a book in you entitled "The Library Project From Hell."
I already have a blog post called...
It's not that bad.
It's not.
It's not that bad. It's called "Five Reasons Not to Build a Library." No, we'll get it, we'll be there, it will be very sweet when it finally gets used.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thanks so much.
No problem.
Okay. Next up is Town Manager Report.
Yep. So, we started, the state started their sewer line inspection project today. That was a, something that the state took on with the towns that were affected by the flooding. So, that's, had no cost to the hardback taxpayers or the hardback ratepayers.
Oh, so this is not, this is separate from, oh yeah, I was thinking water line connections, this is different?
That's the lead service.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is a, since the, since the flood, the state came in, wastewater division came in, said we want to inspect the sewer lines. We're not going to put the cost on the ratepayers, we're going to contract it out, and we signed an MOU with the state, and they're doing the project, and they'll report the findings back to us.
Could we put a camera them, or how do they?
Yeah, I'm going to camera them and clean them.
Yeah. Really?
Yep. So, this is, this is a...
Wow.
Yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah, it is nice.
We should send them a thank you note.
We will. We'll do it, Chris, we'll pass it.
Okay, good.
Some, some items from the wastewater plant. And then the, the substantial damage percentages are coming back, starting to come back from the state. And the wastewater plant was, this is all things wastewater, by the way.
Okay, alright.
Because that's been the consumption of my time lately, is greater than 50% damage, which is, that's kind of what we need, or not really what we need. We knew that was coming. We're going to have to do things like raise the foundation or floodproof, all things that we know we need to do, but it's good when somebody else is saying, no, we need to do it.
Verifying what we know to be true.
Right, yeah. So, FEMA was here yesterday, I'm with the PDMG, which is the, the grants manager, program grants manager. Projects are being lumped in, we've, we've created, I created a disaster, or disaster inventory, or damage inventory, I call it disaster inventory, so it's a damage, a DI. I have everything listed on the spreadsheet. We went through and clumped projects together. So, we've clumped all of the road projects together, and we should be seeing reimbursements with some of the early emergency stuff start to trickle in. To date, we've spent $460,000 on the flood emergency. That's the most recent number. What that doesn't include is our, this is cash going out. What that doesn't include is our, our equipment time that we can still, that we will go for, our material, and our overtime. So, FEMA doesn't reimburse us for our regular time, because we would be here working anyways. Tom's overtime isn't covered. And then, so that's, that's good. So, we'll hope to start recovering some of those funds over the winter months, now that there's no government shutdown.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, you have 45 days.
So, we'll get it hopefully within the next 45 days. No.
Some of it.
And then, I do have some old, there's some stuff I want to bring up in old business.
Okay.
Rather than tie up my management report with that.
Okay.
Stuff we talked about, basically School Street, East Harbrook.
Okay. Alright. So...
What?
Not a word. Alright.
And you want? Well, that's the thing, I'm going to start bringing a lot of stuff up in old business, so it's not to tie up the meeting, but it alarm gates the meeting at the end, because I really like meetings, so...
Yeah, just one comment that I think we're, the town is fortunate that we came into this flood in a financial position where we're able to cover our out-of-pocket costs.
Yeah.
Because clearly, you don't get reimbursed right away for any of this stuff.
Right.
And we were lucky, we didn't have to scramble to go borrow, or not, you know, or not.
No one's banging on our door.
Right.
Yep. It's a good position to be in, sometimes had to go borrow right away.
Right.
Oh, Jake, we still got a couple more problems.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, yes.
Yeah. We're, this is just for emergency repairs.
Right.
We still have bridges.
I know, we still have a lot coming.
East Main Street Bridge, South, the South Main Street Retain Wall.
Yeah. Lot of stuff, that's a big...
Lot of stuff.
Yeah. But that will happen over the course of years, I mean, this was the stuff we needed to have happen right away in order to open roads and get people connected.
What would be ideal possibly is to lump, try to lump all these projects, well, not lump them all, but some of the major bridge, river crossings, boxcars, and bridges, is to lump them into a project in, say, in the summer, and get them all done, and bond short-term borrow for that, and then get reimbursed by FEMA for it. That's...
But we have a little while to map that out, because we wouldn't do it till midsummer anyway.
Well, we need to get...
We need to hide all hydrologic studies.
Right, but we need, we'll, we'll probably get some guidance on how to do that.
Yep.
But that's typically, I think that's how it's done.
Cool. Well, thank you. Next up, Road Foreman Report, Tom, are you getting ready for your winter?
Yes. Today, I think we can mark it down, is we got it all done with flood. So, we did the last part of the pavement today, like, that we had for flood work left with, like, Center Road, Brown's Hill, Mountville, and stuff like that, so we've got those patched up, Belfry, we've got that all patched up and done. They're not great, but they're all filled in for the winter, since we, you know, respond back when we're paid you through.
Still?
Still, yeah. So, far as I know, we sat down the other day, we were thinking if there's any places outside we didn't gravel from the flood, but we got everything all covered that we know of, that we could remember anyway. So, everything has been all re-gravelled where it did flood. Everything is all back open, everything is, is all patched back up, so everything is completely done. In our minds, in ways, that what we can do for what happened with the flood.
Emergency repairs.
Yes. So, those are all done. It did get a late word this afternoon, I don't know if it'll be yet. For, our farms are up there, they will have a bridge for us.
Oh, good.
For that.
Temporary bridge.
Temporary bridge, just, just like the one they did over, did over to Fisher Falls.
It needs to be wide enough for farm equipment.
It needs to be that wide. It's going to be like 13 feet wide, so... I mean, they can get, you know, a farm tractor through, just on, they can do wheels and stuff, track, trail, track and stuff, go through it.
Okay.
I mean, that's all they have.
Yeah.
So, if we want to open that up and plow straight through for the winter, that's what we're going to have to do. So, unless you go, you just don't want to try a different bridge or...
No, we, we'll, I think that's a good idea. Yeah.
But we'll be installing it, save on money and stuff, so we'll be doing that. You've got to get back to me on that, when it all arrives, then middle steps, so we can make arrangements to go and pick that up. I know OP has secured us some Jersey barriers for up to East Harbrook and up to Reesboro Bend for the bridge up there, block that off for the winter. I don't know if you've been talking about the bridge at all up there in the bend or no?
We, I, we just got one quote for 130,000 to remove it.
Yeah.
In honor of the bank.
In honor of the bank. It's a toss-up, I mean, like we talked, dispensing today, I mean, you know, whether we do it or we don't, if it stays like it is all winter, great, but if it falls into the river, then we're in trouble.
Because?
Because it's going to have to take it. It will cause a nice jam and backup water and everything else, and it would have to go down.
And is it the bridge itself, or I thought it was behind the bridge or something?
No, the bridge is buttoned on the, what is that, east side?
It's downstream that's causing, because where the Standard Brook, is it Standard Brook?
Yep.
Comes in, it's, it's dumped a bunch of sediment.
Yeah.
Where the Lomaire comes in, and it's just backed up. And so, if you look at the inspection report that they did two years ago, and look at the inspection report that they just did after the bridge failed, the water level is a lot different.
This is right, so you're trying to steer.
Yeah, so there's a way around.
Right.
And why is Harvard doing that?
It's in Harvard.
It's in the Harvard.
Oh, it's right, oh, lucky us, it's just, it's right at that little corner.
As, we could change the town line.
Because it changes on, on 16, and then it must change back again when you turn.
It goes straight across to a point along the street.
So, if you go to some hill, we own to where the railroad tracks. If you head up Stinner Mountain, we own...
Oh, and the rail's go right there.
Yep. We own where the old underpass used to be. If you go to the right, go across that bridge, that went to ours, and then as you head back towards Walden, that first A-frame, that's still in Harbrook there. So, we own a good chunk of it.
Yeah. Lucky us.
Yes.
And, and two bridges are right there.
Yes. Yeah.
Lucky us.
Yeah, so, I guess it's about it, I guess.
So, you're still thinking about what the plan for that bridge?
Well, we'd still like to get some numbers.
You guys like to get more quotes?
Yeah.
And people are just super busy right now.
Yeah.
So, like, Austin Instruction just, they, they crammed us in to get the Fisher Falls Bridge in. Which was much appreciated.
Yeah.
We did get a line for Arizona, too.
Good segue.
Good segue, alright, so moving right along, Police Department Report.
Sounds like you saved a lot of money on the post, too.
Yeah.
So, that's good. So, I don't know much, the, I met with VAS yesterday, and for snow崩stuff. And I'm kind of thinking in terms of getting a rescue letter, and right now, applying for a grant for them, it would be a 7-footed skirt. I just think it would be something we should have around this area in case something happens.
Alright, have a fire hazard?
And it's a slide, too.
Willing, okay, alright, so, never mind, scrap that. And then, so, the only other thing is just the, the 10th. The school is looking to have a volunteer session, people that want to do, they want to volunteer, shuffle some dances.
Slide some, yeah.
There you go. Or do a ski program, or anything like that, not going to be a fingerprint, you have to go through the system. So, we're going to go up there, no charge, get everything done that night, specifically it's a $30 charge, or depending on him. So, any volunteers that want to go up and get the paperwork out of the way, they're going to be up there and get that all done from, I think, 5:00 to 6:30. I think they'll be up there at 8:00, so just get poured out to people.
That's a great service.
Yeah. That's a huge service, like, as somebody who had to go all the way to Hyde Park or St. John's Bay.
So, like this?
Yeah, we do it at our office, all day long, it seems like.
I think there are a lot of people who need that, I mean, we have a lot of volunteers, and we hire a lot of people to the district, so, that's huge.
For, which, for?
For the school district.
Yeah, yeah.
Just generally.
So, generally, so we'll try and get that done. It may take, you know, if we have a lot of volunteers up there, it may take a little bit longer, but they're going to be up there getting all the paperwork sorted away, and everything, that's good.
This is a one-and-done process? You don't have to do it every year if you volunteer?
Uh, yes.
You do have to do it?
Depends on what volunteer you are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you have to do it again, for change this year?
No, next year, I think it's every four years.
Your fingerprints don't change.
No, it's record length.
Record length, yeah. We can get you in twin. That's all I have.
That's all?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any questions for me? Alright, next up is item one, Select Board to discuss downtown parking. Somebody else needs to leave, if that's what I know.
We talked in our last meeting about creating a task force. We talked in our last meeting about creating a task force for downtown parking, we just didn't assign anybody.
We also talked about, um, the fact that I've had started sort of an organic process and that we took, I took, um, some ideas that had come up in the Downtown Commission, our partnership to the, um, Planning Commission. And, um, so the Planning Commission did some, uh, made some sort of recommendations or agreed on a few things that both groups think are good ideas, um, in there. Kristen, I thought Kristen had put something in our packets. Let's see when it's there, otherwise I'll go.
I didn't, I didn't see it all.
No, um, so, they, uh, so we talked about that the fact that there's no exit-only sign in the Village Diner parking lot, the one that comes out onto Main Street.
There has been some type of.
There are only a couple of, is it?
Yeah.
It's visible now?
It has the.
It's anybody that reads Road Sign.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
There's one way to go on air.
All right, um, there was. There was a suggestion to, um, potentially paint the curb where there are white lines that people are disregarding, the no parking in the intersection in front of the coffee shop and the, um, to paint that curb yellow to further aid in, uh, addressing the need for that, and then when it gets to be snow season, then maybe people will see more of that. Hard to know whether anyone will pay any attention to it without any enforcement. But, um, we, uh, there was a suggestion to change the handicap, um, spot that's in front, that used to be for the co-op basically, that's in the middle of the block to a fifteen-minute delivery zone from eight-thirty to five or whatever, so that we could have a little bit less of the trucks pulling on top of the crosswalk and making their deliveries to the various places. There's some discussion about the handicap sign, whether or not it's supposed to face perpendicular or.
They're working on it.
Parallel to the street.
Technically, it's supposed to be forty-five degrees, but there's no way it's gonna be forty-five degrees.
Isn't it a square post?
Yep.
So you can't put it.
Oh, you gotta pull out everything, because it has to reset everything.
Well, no signs are forty-five degrees, they're all ninety degrees.
It's, it's the new, it's, new stuff we're trying to work, work through right now, trying to figure out what we're gonna do at this point.
Okay, so.
I think, oh, we should just.
Wait, the.
We could explain it.
What's that?
We could explain the sign debacle. Are doing.
Well, I don't want to open that up yet, until we, we have something definitive on it, because it's flushable.
Hang on, but, Jerry, because you said there are two things there, one was maybe eliminate the.
Eliminating that one as a handicap spot.
So it's either or, right, whether we need to adjust the sign.
Um, the other signs will need to be adjusted, because they're all facing, they're all parallel to the.
So, so we, so a lot of those.
They have to be attached.
A lot of those signs got, got placed when they did the, um.
Paving.
The pavement project, and they followed the traffic sta, like, the sign standards.
Yeah.
So we're, we're not, we're trying to get some guidance from the engineer that did the project on how those need to be, and.
Have the standards changed?
They're just, well, they placed them there for a reason, so they're following the standards.
Right.
So then, there's state law, sure, like, traffic law that says maybe something else. So we're trying to.
They're following professional standards, which is not aligned with state law.
Correct, potentially.
Yeah.
Not to screw this conversation up, I'm just saying, there's, there's some more complexity with, with some of the signs on Main Street, but a fifteen-minute loading and unloading might be a good, maybe helpful, helpful there.
Yeah. Um, is there enough space for a delivery truck to fit in there?
No, they got the one they hold more parking.
If they.
In order to put traffic.
Depends on when they catch it.
Well, they, yeah, I mean, they pull in there anyway, um, there's the area that's the bump, technically the bump out for the crosswalk, which they're always on, so this would mean that they would maybe not be on the actual crosswalk, and it would be at least in that space, and then it would also be hello fifteen minutes.
What about if we extend that space there next to the crosswalk as you're, um, going, obviously, we would have a sign right there, but as you drop off, because the other one, you're gonna have, you know, parallel parking of a smaller spot. What if you did it closer to the crosswalk?
I would say it's gonna be eighteen from the crosswalk.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we lost those parking spaces.
Little point that the, that's because the side lanes.
Well, so I mean, if you did get that handicap, you get one more bump it. So maybe that's one.
Take out the handicap and move it to the space behind it where it's near, next to the crosswalk, that way they can pull in there, as opposed to having to do what they get a cap on. Yeah, to a different location.
To a different location.
That's all.
I have, this, these are the suggestions that.
Yeah.
That have been brought up so far, um.
Are there more?
No, that's pretty much it. Um, adding a couple more of the two-hour parking signs instead of just one at one end of the street and another at the other end, might help people realize that they're parking in a space that's supposed to be for two hours. But, you know, most of the people that aren't for longer are people who are local and work on the street, so they full well know that they're parking in a two-hour spot.
So do we want to, so it seems to me, what is it, it's October, and we're gonna have winter, we think, usually we do.
September.
In December.
Yeah.
And, um, a lot of times, winter ends up wiping away a lot of the, we start with a clean slate again in the spring, in terms of lines. Um, so I'm wondering, is it, would it be worthwhile to have a few people work on this? If the winter brings suggestions back to the board before.
Well, we didn't repaint this year.
Right.
Cause they use, they use.
I thought some of it.
Yeah, the company came back.
Yeah, they came back.
That was part of the contract, because they, yeah, they didn't do the, the parking spaces, though, they just did.
No, it needs to be just crosswalks.
They did those early enough where the paint, where they did the, everything else, the crosswalk and stuff, late, uh, in the year, and the paint didn't stick.
So there's two, I think there are two things, there's like the physical parking, and then there's also the enforcement. And so, and that's what Danny always talks about when he's here, so I think we could certainly have a, maybe there's, there are people who tackle both, but physically, it doesn't make sense to reassign any parking lots until next spring, because we're not gonna paint anything this fall.
Parking spaces.
Parking spaces, so then, then the other question is, even if we put fifteen-minute loading sign.
Right.
What does that mean if there's no enforcement for it? What does two hours mean if there's no enforcement for it?
So, that brings me to the point of enforcement, so probably more than three times a week on my way in at seven-thirty in the morning, there is a, uh, box truck, like a twenty, what are they, twenty-six footer?
Jeep, you would do.
Yeah, um, is parked, uh, the wrong way, facing the school. Um, delivering product to businesses on Main Street. So they're, they're violating our ordinance by parking the wrong way on the wrong side of the street in a no parking, a clearly marked no parking zone, with a company logo on the side of their truck, okay? So, part of me says, half of me says, oh, I can call the company and complain about the delivery driver violating our ordinance and, um, potentially violating the law, and, or, and then risk him getting, him or her getting reprimanded, fired, and therefore products don't get delivered to our businesses on Main Street. That's kind of what goes through my mind. So, or, we can be hard-nosed, stop, give them a ticket, call this company, say, the driver is violating our ordinance, parking in a no parking zone, um, trying to get products to our businesses on Main Street. So that's, that's what I wrestle with, in, in the fifteen minutes in, that I have before work. And it, and I'm not trying to single out any business, it happens all along Main Street, whether they're parked one way or the other, they're getting products to our businesses on Main Street. Um, I can't, I can't really speak to employees or patrons or whatever, they're gonna just, they're, they're the general public, they're gonna just do what they do on the parking stuff, but the, the delivery vehicles is what I see, as well as people parking in the parking zone, so I, you know, enforcement's great. I don't think we have the capacity to, to enforce the parking yet, as it is right now. So we have to beef something up, hire somebody to do track, to do parking enforcement. We can't tie up the officers we have in shift to do parking enforcement. I agree, it's a problem. I just don't know, and I agree that there's probably solutions out there, but what are they, what are we willing to do? And how many people are we willing to piss off?
So in the past, we have, and I'm not saying we should do this right now, but in the past, we have had uh, an animal control officer who was also willing to do, um, parking enforcement, and that worked, I thought reasonably well. It's possible that in the future, we'd have another person who was interested in doing parking enforcement, I don't know.
I think we can, we can probably fit it in, in between, just, it would be sporadic, you know, we get time to time, going down there, walking down. Uh, but, the problem we have right now is, you know, we're not sure where the parking is gonna actually be.
But, but right now, it's designated where it is, right?
Right, right, but there's been some, some things that have been up in the air as to, what should we force, what's gonna be changed later down the road?
But even if it's changed later down the road, right now, what's laid out is laid out.
Okay.
I think, and I also think a soft, I think a soft start can be.
Okay.
Right warnings.
Yeah.
For the first.
I mean, we have, I think we have.
Yeah, we have, we've written warnings, we've talked to businesses, shared, quite good, on it as well, so I think.
Oh, so it's already.
The behavior changes for a little while.
Right.
But then it goes right back to not, not really caring or not being diligent about it. And, I mean, a lot of, like, I spend a little bit of time on Main Street, I see, um, and leading by example um, should be the case, and it's not.
Will, will having the bridge in next summer make any difference? Is there enough parking over across the daily plot?
It's gonna re-lead it, but it's not gonna make, it's not gonna change it significantly. I mean, there's gonna be four or five more spots over there, and there'll be people that will park.
There instead of on Main Street, but.
I think it's great that we have a parking problem, because that means our businesses are.
I mean, yeah, but, but continue to believe that we don't have a parking problem as much as we have a walking problem. I never have trouble finding a place to park up by St. Norbert's when I need to drive to the store.
Or by Allegiant during the day.
I mean, there, there are places to park, as long as you're willing to walk.
Twenty-five spaces over here.
The majority of the issues come in when, because we have no place for delivery vehicles to stop and park, or, you know.
And that's not a walking problem.
And that's an everyday thing, and that's just, yeah, and we don't, we don't really have any place for them to pull over.
So that's also not unique to Harpik.
No.
Like, you can go almost anywhere and see delivery trucks have to just make do.
And it happens, and, yeah.
Sometimes they just double park in the traffic lane, I mean, they did that here once, someone else did.
But when the, when the two-hour spaces are shifting, um, very often, there, it's relatively seamless for UPS and FedEx anyway, they manage to find a spot that, where they can just like, get into a two-spot thing, they come and go, and that happens. Um, the bigger issue is that people are persistent on parking in the intersection where we have no parking. And because they can, they continue to do that.
Is there any data on the economics of hiring somebody to, you know, do meter maids pay for themselves?
No, we're not gonna have meters.
I know we don't have meters, but, but, just as a, just as a term for somebody whose only job is to, they don't?
I, I think they, 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 I think the cost of the meters, the cost of the.
No, I'm not, I'm not really suggesting meters to this, okay, I'm just thinking of that as a job, somebody whose job is to be downtown.
Oh, like they generate their own.
By ticket revenue.
By ticket revenue, would they?
Slippery slope right there.
Yeah.
If I got, if I got paid by how many tickets I wrote.
So we're tickets. It's like being paid by the poor foot.
But, you know, as, as a practical matter, you know, in the profession, do they pay for themselves?
Probably if it's a city, if there's like enough volume, and if it's enforced enough.
Given a big enough number of blocks.
The problem is that we're, it's not just the meter maid that would be hiring, it's also hiring somebody to tow, somebody if they didn't pay for it, and keeping track of that license plate number.
Boots.
And having, uh, impound yard.
Yeah.
And.
And, and, and.
But maybe we could just work on the task force, the little group can work on signage, because if you're new to Harpik, it is, you don't know where to park. It's like, there's one little sign, but we could totally be directing people up here, we could be directing people up to St. Norbert's better, like, that wouldn't be super high cost.
Yeah, there's, there's the, um, there, there are not a lot of signs out there.
I feel like there are a lot of signs.
It's not.
I don't think it's hard, I'll just general coming to Harpik.
Well, that's life.
I mean, it's.
When you're not from here, you don't, you know. Man, I don't know, I just.
I spent a lot of time.
So what do we wanna do tonight? I wanna move this along.
Can we paint the curb yellow where the lights are?
All right.
One thing.
You got it, you got it, yellow paint.
At least we're, we're not in the, we're at least we're not in the pandemic where you couldn't get paint.
Just a visual reminder.
I don't know about that.
Oh, really? You don't think you'd get yellow paint?
I could shock you tonight about how much a dump, dump truck's gonna cost.
Oh, okay.
We're not talking about dump trucks, we're talking about.
She doesn't wanna hear.
All right, let's paint the curb.
Paint the curb.
Years to painting the curb.
All right, cheers, painting the curb. All right, so that's one thing we can do, and then what?
That's a visual reminder.
So coming, to deciding about changing a parking, what's the right number?
And then we were gonna change the handicap lot to a fifteen-minute.
We can do that, but Mike's suggesting that he also move that up one place, I think. He thought it'd be easier for delivery trucks to scoot in if there wasn't in, in the place uphill from the curb.
Cause right now, when they're, they park, they're parking all that space anyway, and they're taking up, you know, but as you've seen.
Yeah, the bigger trucks are, but this is, sometimes this is me needing to drop something off at the store that I can't carry from St. Norbert's, um, you know, or Mark needing to drop something, you know, so it's more like. Flower basket needs to stop in, pick up this thing and take it, and not have to circle.
Difference if we move that space back, I'm just saying for bigger trucks, it'd be easier for them to get in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like. Yeah, the big box trucks that deliver to the Chinese restaurant are always gonna do whatever they want, they just do.
I wonder if we could do an incentive program to the businesses in the downtown, and like, do a competition, like, if your employees don't get a parking ticket throughout the course of a month, like, throw them a party or something. Cause that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Because people are gonna come to my office, and they're gonna bitch and complain that they got a parking ticket because they had to park to go to work on Main Street. I could already see it happening.
So, so you're thinking, let's create an incentive program.
To park.
Yeah.
Find places to park that aren't, like, here, these parking spaces, after five o'clock, wide open.
Yeah.
Um.
And you have to have lots of places, right.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm not saying, like, we need to try a bunch of different things, but I'm not trying to, like, place blame on any one person or one business, or one group of people in town, you know, I'm just like, we gotta try, we gotta try some things, mix it up.
All right, so, we're gonna paint a curb yellow.
Yeah.
We're going to, are we changing, we're just changing the handicap to a fifteen-minute?
Loading and unloading or fifteen-minute?
Whichever, uh. Whichever, uh, fifteen-minute is pretty good, loading, unloading is.
People are gonna push the fifteen-minute. So I, loading and unloading is like, there's no timeline here, it's just loading and unloading.
Yeah.
Like, I, I, if I saw fifteen minutes, I'd be like, ah, I got forty-five. If I saw loading and unloading, I'd be like, oh, I gotta get out.
That's not me.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Gotta buy the sign.
Where about, but isn't the handicap also painted on the, on pavement? So it's not as easy as just changing the sign. Have you?
You can pull the signpost, right?
No, it was painted on.
Paint it on, yeah.
Well, it's just painted on, right?
The handicap signpost on there.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, because of the state, yeah, okay.
Won't we take it?
Bring your kids over there.
Sometimes, yeah. We could just paint over the black paint.
You can stay.
Cracked it, I don't know.
Start with the yellow curve, please.
Okay, just yellow curve, that's it for now?
Again, that'll be something.
Okay, yellow curve for now. Okay, sounds good.
We still have to order a fifteen-minute or a loading and unloading side there, we owe one.
Hey, Mike, you report back on the availability of a loading and unloading or a fifteen-minute sign?
Well, you can get it, it just takes a few weeks.
Do we wanna get him ordering one?
Up to you.
I don't care.
I'm not gonna.
Let's do it.
Oh, we can do it.
Put that on your list of stuff.
What's it?
Order a sign.
Loading and unloading.
Okay, I gotta move us on. Item two, select board to sign the Downtown Migrancy Fund Letter of Attestation.
So this is related to the, um, the Downtown Migrancy Program, which is a grant program that is for the designated downtowns, twenty-four designated downtowns in the state. Um, so we'll be receiving a twenty-five thousand dollar grant this, the first year for it.
Yeah.
It's not in statute yet, but we hope that it will get there. But this is just part of acknowledging that it's, the program is for the designation of the downtown and our, the Hardwick Downtown Partnership is planning to use it to hire executive director.
Great.
Have a paid part-time position, planning who's gonna do a lot of that sort of work and organizing and. I can foundation building stuff.
Do we, will you motion, Cherry, or we just can decide?
We just.
Yeah, both.
I can motion that the, uh, motion to approve Downtown Migrancy Fund Letter of Attestation.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries, so we, we have, here it carries, right? So we sign. So the next one is item three, select board to review and authorize town manager to sign the payment agreement with Casella for removal of the dirty dirt at the Yellow Barn site. I'm sorry, I should provide the background here. So, Yellow Barn project, the barn itself is actually going remarkably well. It was lifted up, they did a new foundation, they put it back down, it's like moving in there. The new accelerator building that's next to it, there's fill that was placed there over the years that was unsuitable structurally to build on. Our original, um, our original environmental test showed that that fill was also not contaminated soil. So we thought we were okay. But then it turned out that in our plan, it said we had to test it again when we were excavating. And so when we tested it again, some of it was, showed to be contaminated, it's quite a lot of soil. We were trucking it to Coventry, um, because, because when you have dirty dirt, you have to send it to Coventry, so it goes to Lake Men from Agog and not to Lacey and Plain, I guess. So, um, anyway.
Well, it's used as cover for.
It's used as daily cover. So there's a whole bunch of scary got pulled into this a little bit, because we needed to work with this all-lease district on this too.
Right.
So, um, thank you for your help, because that was really good.
Well, it could save us about, what, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
Uh, yes, yeah, it was a lot of dollars.
Worth it, worth attending all the meetings all the time. I have, I have so much attendance, and, yeah, I think it helped.
I saw that, a bunch of stars next year, Jamie, you got some.
Show up, so, you know, there's a reason to show up, yeah. But because they charge us an administrative fee instead of the full fee.
Right, right, so the administrative fee is only seven dollars and fifty cents a ton instead of thirty dollars a ton that we would pay in addition to.
Which is still a racket to me.
It is a racket, it's, it's just.
Well, the solid waste district's making some bank this year.
Um, I like the nominee, Cherry, first select board member of the year, I'm not, that's a big scene, big scene.
My arms are short, otherwise.
I'm serious, that was.
No, that was a good, that was really good, I absolutely appreciate it.
Certainly worth asking the question, yeah.
I totally appreciate it. So, the issue is that even after that reduction in that fee, there's still approximately a million dollars of cost to move that soil to Coventry. We have currently a pending grant application that's into the Brownfields Fund of the State of Vermont. It's been reviewed by the review committee, it's been put up for interdepartmental review. We have, um, very, we have, we have high hopes, I guess, that, that we're actually gonna get funded. Maybe not a hundred percent, but we're gonna get funded. I, I need to explain a little detail here, and I'm sorry, so.
Yeah, that's good.
So there was a push to try to get some of that soil headed to Coventry, because there's some of it still in the ground. It was preventing excavation, which is preventing, um, putting in footings and getting the building set before winter. So we really need to get out of there, and so, but we don't have the grant, we don't have a grant award yet. So it's only part of the soil that's still in the ground, so a bunch of it's piled down by right farm. So, what's happening right now is on Tuesday, that some of the soil that had been in the ground started doing Coventry, um, we're only gonna truck up to two hundred thousand dollars worth of cost of soil ahead of receiving some sort of grant approval. If, if the grant doesn't come through, then the project pays for our two hundred thousand, it's gonna come out of our contingency ultimately. But in the meantime, because we applied, because the town of Hardwick owns the property, the town of Hardwick had to apply for the grant, that bills are coming to the town of Hardwick. So that's why it's coming to us, um, to make a decision. So I just want everybody to know, we're incurring costs, we're expecting a grant, we don't have the grant. But the bad stop is, if the grant doesn't come through, then the project pays, which, yeah.
Is this two hundred thousand dollars worth of creative space that you need? Maybe more of it.
Maybe, so the, so the, so probably, but the trouble is that there's another amount of dirt that's still in the ground, that has to be removed, that tested clean. But our, our person from D E C, who's been really great, that she wanted us to retest those clean sections. So that retesting was done on Tuesday. Last I heard is the results, we'll have results of that early next week.
So it's clean, we don't have to ship it to.
It is clean, it's unregulated, and it'll just go away as part of an internal, yeah.
Well, there are plenty of places that need dirt right now.
Exactly, yeah, it's not a problem if it's clean. But if it comes back and it's dirty, then yeah, then we have a bit of an issue, and we'll have to figure out how to navigate that. But maybe, I don't know what the turnaround is on this grant, so.
Do you need a, do you need a motion?
Yeah, if it's time.
Um, I move that we authorize the town manager to sign the payment agreement with Casella for the removal of the contaminated soil at the Yellow Barn site.
Do you also want authorization to sign the agreement with the Solid Waste District?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
That too.
Any, any items related to the removal of soil contamination of the Yellow Barn?
And any items?
Project.
Any items related to the removal of contaminated soil associated with the Yellow Barn?
What did you?
Nah.
Second?
Amanda, did you get enough of that?
Yeah.
She's good.
Yeah, so, uh, any more questions or discussion on that? So all in favor, please say aye.
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 And I'm gonna abstain, um, because one of our grant, um, awards requested that I abstain from any votes on the Yellow Barn, so.
Another, another example of a project moving forward.
That's true, it is definitely moving that way.
We need to keep moving this forward, and it's a very, um, well-liked project at all levels through the state. And it's exciting, so I, I still, I'll always be a, you know, I'll always have conversations about the Yellow Barn impact, if people wanna have conversations, so. But this is good for Hardwick.
Yeah, it's coming along pretty well right now. Thank you all. So item four, select board to authorize S E Group proposal for the second phase of the pedestrian bridge and park.
So we, we didn't do that.
No.
Because it changed after the flood, they had to do us a change. We had just the draft of the first one, so this is the second version. The existing conditions changed.
Yeah.
They revised the existing conditions. This is really for, um, the design of the bridge, um, and the design of the bridge, bid, bridge project and permitting. So this is that next step.
An engineer.
To get shovel-ready, an engineer.
Does, does this get us from where we are today to getting bids that we can choose from?
They will, they will.
And how many years are they gonna take to do that?
This is gonna all happen before the end of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, it has to.
The bids?
The project.
The project.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Does S E Group understand that?
The bridge.
Yep.
Yeah, they do know.
And we have.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
We have.
The bridge.
We also have.
That's okay, yeah, all right.
No, he, he understands it, really regularly, again.
So with this proposal of the phase two, it's, um, nine-four thousand to bring the bridge project to bid to S E Group for permitting. And then there's forty-five thousand in the park project design and permit. And I have us together with a ten thousand dollar contingency for a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And then we also have Bridge Brothers, because that's a bridge manufacturing company, and they're willing to sell us a stamped set of drawings for the bridge engineering that we can submit to USDA, so we can get this bridge approved. So we need to get approval that this will be okay, um, for the, the engineering and design of the bridge. And engineering of the bridge, not design, S E Group's doing it. They're working with Bridge Brothers. But this is us, this is what we, we kept running up against a wall with, um, this engineering of the bridge, because S E Group is a, is a landscape architect, which we were instructed to hire from the beginning of the project. And then we ran into some problems with that, um, and then, so hopefully this will get us a little closer.
And then there was supposedly just one place on earth where you could get the bridge that we've selected in our public major process, but apparently Bridge Brothers has been out there all the time, and they could also help us with it.
So we'd like to get, so we're moving, we're moving rather quickly, or?
So who's still involved in it, so Cherry clearly.
Myself, Tracy.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Billy, that happened.
Okay.
And then Phil, the, uh, the engineer.
Engineering mentors. So we're hoping that the fabrication of this bridge, I will schedule our bids. Um, the fabrication of this bridge will happen from when we finalize the permitting and get everything good to go. This will happen starting in June, and it'll be delivered in September, and we'll place it, um, we'll place it, bridge installation is scheduled for mid-ten, mid-October into November next year. So a year from now, we'll be placing that bridge.
Oh, they did the.
If everything goes well.
Did the flooding of that area help or hurt?
Um, oh.
Well, it had effects, it took effect.
It, it created some new conditions, the existing conditions, it created some new ones. So they kinda had, I wouldn't say that it went backwards, but it, it also kinda changed. Well, it, it created a problem with that retaining, the submature retaining wall on the park, because before that, I would call it double foundation, that was lower, was holding that wall up. And if you look at that wall, there's a footing on top of the footing, and there's a big crack in that wall up. And that's not necessarily part of the bridge, but it's tied into the abutment around the corner. And that's a very tight area to work, so we wanna do that, the, the restoration of that park on the Main Street side, the bridge abutment, and eventually setting the bridge. We wanna do that all in one shot.
Right, perfect steps.
Right, and I'm hoping that some of that work can be reimbursed, reimbursable by feet. That's gonna be a little complicated, and I, if it's gonna slow things down, we have to decide if it's even worth the fight. But that retaining wall is gonna be an issue. It's, believe it or not, there's a lot.
Not be an issue going forward, if the crack is there.
Yeah.
It's, it's been affected, so.
There's a lot going on right there.
So, I just wanna, I don't know, I mean, I want, I definitely want this project to go forward, and probably this is the only way to keep it moving forward, but I just wanna express that I feel like that same schedule that you just offered.
Yeah.
At one point was the twenty-twenty-three schedule.
It was.
And the twenty-twenty-four schedule.
It was.
And I, and I feel like that our process, the meetings that I was in with S E Group, there's just, the process kills me. It's just so unbearably, grindingly slow.
Yeah.
So I'm concerned about that.
Well, we just got Boring's done.
That's true.
The Boring's done.
I'm also a little bit, I'm, I'm hoping that their, the total hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost, I'm hoping most of that is being subbed out to engineers or something, because that seems like a really high cost.
A lot of it's permitting, and paying engineers to get the permitting together.
Okay.
Because they've taken on engineering mentors, S E Group.
Take, take, yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's gonna get it, yeah, and somebody's gonna design, that's gonna all be getting the permitting and designing the abutments.
Yeah, and then putting together the construction documents and the bidding.
Right, and taking us through it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
All necessary goals.
I know, no, I know it's all necessary, I just, I hope that they're up to the task.
Me too. But they've done a lot, I mean, they're a big company, they've done a lot of projects.
Yeah, I know.
I mean.
But ours is still.
Right.
Not done.
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, I'm just voicing my, I just want, I just have to say it.
It's gotten much better.
Okay. All right, good, I'm glad to hear that report.
Much better.
We could get really good at fixing bridges, doing the Hardwick farm spray, and we could just do it ourselves.
Yeah, seriously, and it's basically, yeah.
Okay, anyway.
I can motion to approve, um, the phase two proposal from the S E Group.
Second?
Any more, uh, discussion or whining?
It's okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we opposed, motion carries. Next, select board reports.
Final public meeting of the, um, L B R T Regional Amenities Scoping Study. This is the, how, well, how all of the trailheads will be designed in our area. It's on Wednesday, the eleventh, so it's a week from yesterday at the townhouse. It's the last public hearing to make comments. Yeah, six P M.
Okay, duly noted. Hopey and I met with, uh, Hope you and I met with Ted Brady from V L C T the other day. Ted Brady and?
Josh.
Josh.
Hanford, Hanford, Hanford? What is his?
Josh Yanther?
Hanford.
Okay.
Yeah. He was the, the housing?
He used to be an A C C.
A C C, yeah, he was a commissioner.
Right, so, so they were just happened to be passing through and said, can we stop? And so we had a, thought a good meeting with them.
Yeah.
Just.
In temporary.
Yeah.
Just about whatever?
Well.
Well, no, it was about overweight trucks, trapping, and taxation, like.
Oh, yeah, like.
Pooling.
What do you call the, the tax districts that are in the community, like when you tax result, and that, tax increment district, that sort of thing?
Yeah.
But there was also another part of that where they're working to get, you know how the state of Vermont gives us, gives towns money for roads?
The grant name.
Grants and aid for roads, and they just give it to you. You, you say, we're gonna abide by your standards.
Yeah.
They give you some money, and you work that in your roads. And V L C T is advocating that the state can do that with more things, instead of making us fight amongst ourselves for grants from the state. Maybe they could just allocate us some money and trust us to do the thing.
Actually do it, yeah.
Does sound great. And so that was their agenda, but then we, we pretty much hit them up with our agenda, like, we have this flooding, this is what's going on, we have these big projects, we have a new town garage, you know, we just gave.
They gave us a new town garage.
Modular.
Yeah, we gave them a lottery list while they were here, because why not?
Not that they can do anything with it.
Well, but it's important for them to hear whatever.
They know about it now.
Right.
Yeah, they know not to come.
We tell everyone. Yeah. Alright.
They're dropping in.
Yeah.
Other reports?
Four o'clock drop-in.
I have a little weak old business.
New business?
What you know, rail trail. Ketro's got the bid for this section.
Yeah.
On through what?
Really?
Yes.
It's been bid?
They're working, they've been working.
Uh, so from what I gather, it will be open from the townhouse all the way to Woke if by this winter.
Really?
That section up there is gonna be in the air probably.
There'll be a, V Trans will make a report at that, at the beginning of that meeting as well.
Great.
What the latest update is.
Down by Willy's House or somewhere along there right now, so. But you can go.
That's awesome.
Yeah, you can go from Cape Broke Road now to all the way to St. Alvin's, so.
Thanks.
I saw that they had repaired by Fisher Bridge, so they're working this way.
They're coming out of the road target right now.
Nice. That's awesome.
And then there's dirt, tax is coming this way.
Up Beltray Way.
Yeah, so they're hoping to meet.
A toward Beaver.
For the bridges, are those a separate contract?
Uh, no, there's no pay for bill.
Well, that's, they haven't decided yet what exactly they're gonna do.
Oh, really?
There's been some.
Yeah, there's some abutment issues there too.
Yeah, there's a serious issue. So that's a problem there. There's three bridges right there.
Two.
But they're two seg, each one has two segments, they don't, they don't have a middle or a bridge.
Yeah, a middle of.
Yeah, very grand river.
Yeah.
That's great news. Thank you. Um, alright.
I've got, I've got some old business. So FEMA asked what we wanna do with the slide on School Street.
Oh, yeah, on East Hardwick or East Route 16.
Right. What, and I basically said, what, with the select board, we haven't really decided what we wanna do with that road. I do have an email here from E N O. They met and had some conversation about it. So, I mean, the state geologist said the rehab of that and bringing it back to where it was pre-flood is gonna be over $2 million.
Or full circle.
Well, that's the thing. Do we wanna, that's gonna be a huge fight with FEMA, and I don't think they're gonna wanna, I mean, I, I don't think that is gonna, it's a good use of taxpayer funds to rebuild. Well, they say a lot of things.
What's the?
They're a bunch of different ideas.
Yeah, I can read them, but I would say that the majority say they wanna keep it closed. There's still speeding on School Street. Uh, there's a lot of people cutting through the store. So we do have a plan in place. We're gonna get 12 Jersey barriers, and with, along with the delivery to the East Main Street Bridge in North Hardwick on the 320 back down line, uh, we're gonna put some there, and we're gonna put some of the Route 16 intersection of School Street down by the mini mart, so they can't be moving. They, they can't be moved, because people are moving them. No, they're moving the temporary, the temporary side. No. So.
Very strong.
So that's, that's a couple of them, and then some suggestions, here's number five, some suggestions for dealing with School Street, include one, blocking off the intersection with the mini mart, right, oh, this is making, putting curbing through the center of the parking lot. So people living half on the School Street side would have to go that way to get out, and folks living on this side would have to go off 16, then they couldn't go around. The longer-term plan should be, well, we have that Better Connections Grant that we could look at. And then working with the owners of D N L to install signage and speed bumps, or speed bumps. So, and then define more sidewalk areas given, so there's, there's a traffic problem associated with closing that road that we have to deal with. I don't think making it one-way, I don't know if that's a good idea or not. Like, just making it one-way, one-lane, or, I mean, truck, truck traffic uses it in the, during chop and season, and no law of farmers use it, but they can just go further up.
What's the, did this state geologist offer any opinion on the stability of what's remaining there? Like, is it gonna just continue to the road?
Yeah, it's really steep.
I know, I haven't been over there in a while, but the pictures show it being markedly farther into the road than it is there.
Oh, it's underneath, it's underneath asphalt.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a problem. That's why we need to prevent traffic from driving on it.
I guess my question is more aimed at, like, in the long run. Is it maybe to our, well, right, is it maybe to our benefit to stabilize it at some point so that it doesn't just keep moving?
At some point, you're gonna have to.
In some way, shape, or form.
Right, because they're gonna start taking away land.
Right.
And then they're gonna come back after you anyways, that's, you know, the tale.
Well, some of the traffic property.
But it's not that far from Route 16.
Right.
It's what, 50 feet from Route 16?
Yeah. There's a lot of the gravel underneath there.
Same with Ron.
Yeah, it's definitely.
So the problem is.
Lost my pay grade, that's for sure. Figuring out how to deal with that.
Is it possible to do a solution for the winter that, that works?
The, the, yeah.
For plowing and for access?
Yeah.
Okay, so you've got, you've got that figured out. Longer term, so do we get a report or anything from the state geologist ultimately?
I, I thought I got it, but I, I didn't.
So you're gonna try to get it?
I requested it. And I know they sent one to the emergency management, because it was all logged under a request through the emergency operations center. So I think we went back to that.
There is another complication. It's not really our, it's not on us, it's on the eastern fire district. There's a water line.
They're taking care of that.
They're taking care of that?
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
But that probably means digging it.
They're gonna put the water line on the Merz side of the road and then cross further up. And they, they're all set with that.
I think one, just as a Hardwick resident, what I've noticed, East Hardwick resident, what I've noticed is because more people are driving through Main Street to get to East Hardwick, that the visibility, and there's not a huge shoulder for trucks to turn onto from 16 onto Main Street.
Yeah.
And so that's getting kind of eroded, because they're just like turning, before, School Street was like an easy way for bigger trucks to get through.
Yeah.
So that's kind of getting, that corner is getting a little bit run down, and then there are those big, there's those pine trees right on the road that, that's always a tricky spot to turn.
Yeah.
On 16.
And to see traffic coming.
Yeah, so if, if we are going to decide to have that be our main way onto 16, I think we should look at ways to make that intersection.
Yeah.
Better.
I think engaging with the regional planning commission might be a good idea for this one, and V Trans.
Yeah, our district, because that's. Which district is that?
Well, for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Only complaining about the pine tree before, but we can't touch them. Cause they're state highway, and then they're far enough off state highway, state thumb gun type hatch them, and they're on private land, so I can't. You can ask landlords to cut them down or trim them, but.
Okay.
That's like asking the county.
Oh.
It's not gay. Ah, I thought you were. I didn't say it aloud enough.
So.
Could we condemn those as, as public safety issues, those trees?
Oh, geez. That's a, you probably could.
Make everything so way.
Well, it's just like, I don't wanna live in a, I don't wanna live in a state like that.
So.
The hand of the government.
Okay, so can we say that just for, for right now, for this winter, you guys, you have a plan that's gonna keep that safe and nobody's gonna fall in the dirt this winter, probably?
And it sounds like if we can talk to the regional planning commission to come up with that, because it really is tied into Route 16, so the state should be.
Other roadway, then you don't care.
Right.
They don't care. But we've gotta engage with the regional planning commission to come up with some solutions. As to what to do, and I can reengage with the state geologist and see, I mean, his job is just to come out and survey it, not survey it, but look at it, document it, provide a report.
But we, if possible, if we could get more guidance there.
Yeah.
It would be, I think that would be really helpful.
Even if we, if we didn't cut, if we, if we didn't reclaim the current road.
But we stopped it from eroding even where it is.
Cut the bank down so it was more of a slope.
Yeah.
That might actually be, you know, that might, and then basically the bank would start behind Merz's shop and kind of, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but it'd be great to have somebody look at it and.
There's nothing going on on that side of the road all the way down to that first farmhouse on School Street.
Would be, it'd be great to have somebody look at it and say, yeah, if you do that, that'll stop it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be.
Okay.
I would think you're gonna have to drive, pile them in there.
Yeah. You think that's the only way to, you know?
It would look quicksand right at the bottom.
You could, you can't, if you saw it like a couple days after the flood.
Yeah.
The water was just pouring out.
I mean, it was like an eight-inch busted water, I mean, it was just.
Yeah.
When I was traveling that road twice a day in the seventies, just beyond where John Hancock used to live, there was a part of the road that about every four years, they'd have to come in and repay.
Route 16.
Where I didn't.
Yeah, just right across from Beltray, right, yeah, still there.
And it was just kind of sliding down into the river, and they'd put some more pavement on and slide down.
Same program.
I suspect that this is the same geological problem.
Probably, and that area that we're talking about, they still do that.
Yeah.
Do they still?
It still slumps and still.
Eventually, they're gonna get that pavement writing down.
Right, it's a bit long, no?
Yeah. Yeah, no, you're right. It probably is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a good solution, but this isn't my business.
But it's incremental. Sometimes, yeah, sometimes it's easier to.
Hey, hey, as you go.
So you had something to?
I actually have a poor old business that I reached out to them, getting off our last meeting, mentioning that the E B station wasn't on the map, and she's working on that with Mike to make sure that the E B station is more visible.
Oh, great.
Well, and aren't we due for another meeting with them?
Yeah, when do you wanna have that?
Part with the electric commissioners and the, because we need to discuss with them the park and the bridge as well, because they don't seem to know anything about that project.
Okay.
We made some headway today. They asked for an application.
But either way.
For the site visit.
Yeah. Anyway, we need to have a meeting with them.
Yeah.
So when do you wanna have it? I can get, work, I can work that in.
So, gosh.
I'm retired.
Well.
What's time to pay?
Hi?
I said, I'm retired. What's time to pay?
Um, you wanna do?
One's a regular meeting.
Their meetings are on the third Monday of the month at 5:00. So their meeting is at, the 16th at 5:00. And we have a meeting that Thursday, the 19th of October. November is the 20th, and then we have a meeting on the, just before that.
Well, do we meet on the same day that they have their meeting, or do we need to do something different?
I can ask if, yeah, but they're, so in the past, we've done it just before, and then they resume their meetings, so we could do maybe a, a 4:00 meeting, because they start at 5:00.
On the 16th?
On the, I would say let's push it to November 20th. No? Yes?
Okay, as long as it's not gonna interfere with their holiday plans, you know?
Yeah, I can find, so do you want to request a joint meeting prior to their regularly scheduled commissioners meeting?
Sure.
On the 20th?
Okay.
I noticed a big thing that Green Mountain Power put out on the report forum about how they're helping people get rebates on electric cars and all kinds of stuff like that.